Good afternoon, I'd like to call to order the School Board of Seminole County, Florida's May 3rd, 2016, regular school board meeting. Let the record reflect that all school board members are in attendance along with our superintendent and legal counsel. At this point in time, I'd like to turn it over to Mrs. Allman to lead us in the invocation and pledge, please.
Thank you. This week, we celebrate Teacher Appreciation Week, and this is a time for us to return the gratitude to our teachers. They merit the recognition for their noble work and let us celebrate them. So I found a poem written by Kevin William Huff. "Teachers paint their minds and guide their thoughts, share their achievements and advise their faults. Inspire a love of knowledge and truth as you light the path which leads our youth. For our future brightens with each lesson you teach, each smile you lengthen, each goal you help reach. For the dawn of each poet, each philosopher and king begins with a teacher and a wisdom they bring." So thank you to all of our teachers for their hard work. Please join me and stand for the pledge.
Pledge ready. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation and one God, the individual is pleasured to be and held for all." Thank you. Thank you so much, Mrs. Allman.
Thank you.
I'd like to, at this point in time, acknowledge one of our business advisory board members in attendance, Jennifer Webb. Thank you so much for being here today with us, we appreciate it. We'd like to go through any agenda modifications, Ms. Dr. Superintendent.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Addendum for Good Cause is marked on an electronic agenda by a green flag named addendum item. And also, I have one item to pull, it's Item 2A Administrator Introductions.
Vice Chairman Lockhart, do you have any items selected for removal or comments?
Do not.
Member Allman?
No ma'am, thank you.
Member Schaffner?
Yes, hold on just a second, let me find it again. I have a comment on 4C as in Charlie.
Member Bauer?
None, thank you.
And I don't have any as well. Is there an approval for?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign, motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Seeing that there is no presentations or recognitions, we can move on to our school district highlights of the power of you with Mr. Harold Gard. Good afternoon.
Good morning, how are you?
Wonderful.
So, we just quickly wanted, good afternoon, Board and Dr. Griffin. We just wanted to quickly give you an overview of Power of You for 2016. We're very excited that we were able to offer this opportunity to our teachers again, and we learned things from last year, and so we've made some adjustments and wanted to highlight some of those for you. So, just FYI to begin with, this is the cover of our catalog that was distributed to teachers on Friday, and at this point, we have over 4,000 registrations that have already occurred.
Wow.
We just sent it out Friday. So, it's one of those, if you build it, they will come. So again, thank you for your support of this effort. We will be hosting at Hagerty High School, Lyman High School, Rock Lake Middle School, and Sanford Middle School this year, and we have sessions at each site each day. And as we kind of wander through the catalog here, you'll see that we did some things differently this year. We wanted teachers to have the opportunity to get a little more focused, and so we have six unique tracks that we offer sessions in. The first one, the Power of Planning, is really just about that curriculum planning and effective lesson planning in order to make sure that we're meeting the rigor of the standards and preparing our students for whatever assessment that they take. Technology Tools is a kind of a device or product first, but then also with that integration approach. So while I may learn how to use eCampus, then at the end of my session, I'm going to be going ahead and planning for that integration into the first several weeks of my school year. We have a unique track for the first three years, which is for any teacher who is in their first three years in education, and so we really wanted to address that information that was in the broad report in order to support those new teachers with their onboarding and their continuous development, in order to make sure that they feel supported from the onset. Engaging diverse populations is not just about cultural diversity, but it's also about academic diversity and meeting the needs of all the needs of our students in all of our classes. PD for unique roles, we had a lot of requests from guidance counselors, CTE teachers, support facilitators, saying, "What do you have for me?" Excuse me. So we built a unique track for them. And then finally, we have our administrative growth, which is for our administrators to engage in professional development over the summer. We think it's important for them to model to teachers that we're all learning all the time. So as you will see, as we progress through the catalog, it's all interactive, so if we go to a particular date, July 18th, you can see in the Power of Planning, here's all of the things that are happening in the Power of Planning on July the 18th. And I just want to note one additional thing, something we learned from last year, there was a lot of information. So teachers would go to a six-hour session, and they would go for 12 different days, and they would come back and they'd say, "Wow, I learned a lot of great stuff," but it was almost overwhelming, and there wasn't a plan for them to implement those professional learning opportunities in their classrooms. So what we've built this year are, it's still a six-hour session, but we're really saying maybe three hours of new content. And then in the last three hours, you need to be looking at your instructional plans, your lesson plans, your instructional materials, and going ahead and making that plan for integrating what you've learned into your first trimester, your first quarter, so that those skills and strategies that you're learning during the sessions instantly have a platform for application. And then beyond that, each session, each six-hour session, has a small 30-minute version that goes along with it, that's basically the best of the best of that session. So that if Dr. Calderon attends a session and she learns something that's really great, and her principal says to her, "Wow, whatever you learned is really great, could you share something in a PLC?" She has ready-made materials to share with the teachers at her school.
Wonderful.
So as you can see from the catalog, last year, we had 145 unique, or 145 sessions. We weren't able to get to 145 this year, instead, we exceeded 160. So we have more sessions available in a shorter timeframe, so we have just eight days this year for Power of You. As you can see, this session here is called "What's the Buzz About Blended Learning?" It's for K-5 teachers. If I click on that, it takes me to, whoop, operator error. I'll just pick anyone here. So keep calm and differentiate thriving in the literacy classroom, so this is particularly for K-1 teachers. You can see there that there's a detailed description of what teachers can expect from their session. Down here is the session ID, so there's a 67, or yeah, 6799 on July 18th and 19th at Rock Lake. If I say, "Man, I'm a first grade teacher and I think this is exactly the session that I need," I click on that, and it takes me directly to PD place where I can register for that activity. So we're trying to make this as user-friendly for teachers as possible, trying to make sure that we hear their voice and the feedback that we've received from last year. And then also, we have a plan for collecting data after all of these sessions on how did this impact your students.
Fantastic. Comments or questions? Yes, Mrs. Allman?
I have a comment. I appreciate very much that you have a session for new teachers that are three years or less. Something I have heard a couple of times from new teachers, occasionally, they'll do one year at one school, move to another, they have a hard time distinguishing what is a school-related policy or practice, and then they go to a second campus, and they may not be as well-received with how they're doing procedures. So do you address that in the conversations?
Yeah, so this is largely about rules and procedures, and it's not just rules and procedures in the classroom, it's about rules and procedures for interacting with your colleagues, for being on the team, for working with your administrator, for creating a deliberate practice plan that's meaningful and supports your students. So we do, we do offer some information about, you know, at this school, things may be this way, but it's really trying to support what is good instruction, what is the best way to get your students to where they need to be.
Thank you.
Neat, Ms. Schaffner?
I just think these are incredible. I know Randy Allman was really the one that started this whole program, the summer program, but it's just a great opportunity for teachers, all the way from the brand-new teachers to those that are trying some new things that we are offering, and I just, it's just such a great opportunity. Couple of questions for you, are these, the 4,000 you said have signed up, are these unduplicated or?
No, that's duplicated.
Duplicated, so I could sign up for seven courses?
Correct, there are eight days, so you could sign up for something different every day.
And they're all free?
That's correct, and they all come with a $100 stipend.
Okay, thank you.
Correct. Thank you for your leadership, I look forward to attending a lot myself.
We look forward to seeing you there.
Thank you. Dr. Griffin, do you have a motion for consent agenda?
That the consent agenda be approved as presented.
So moved.
There's a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing, I'm sorry. Ms. Lockhart, you did have a question? No.
I just had a comment.
Okay.
And it's a good comment.
Okay.
On our insurance work session, there was a paragraph in here that, having served on the insurance committee in the past, and we have made such a paradigm shift within the district of going to wellness versus trying to, we're trying to be preventive in what we're doing, and I just wanted to read this into the minutes because I think it's so important. District's population has an 89.1 preventative care participation, that's incredible. And when we met with Cigna, they said that was incredible, they were shocked, but very, very pleased. Health assessment completion is at 80.5 percent, both of these measures exceed the norm. They didn't just exceed it, they went way overboard, it was just incredible. Overall health engagement of our population is 76 percent, with a norm of 43 percent. Well-visit completion rates for adults increased from 73.9 to 79.7 and compares to a norm of 39.2. Do we have a ways to go? Absolutely, but boy, have we come a long way. It's just amazing, and I think the message we have sent to our employees is, we are trying to focus on, we want you to focus on your health and wellness, and that's what this is all about, preventive rather than reactive.
Absolutely, thank you. Well, there is a motion and a second, that was one comment, are there any further comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign, motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much. Dr. Griffin, do you have a recommendation for disciplinary?
Yes, I do, Madam Chair, that the School Board of Seminole County approve student disciplinary recommendations from April 4th, 2016, and April 18th, 2016.
So moved.
Second. There's a motion and a second, any questions or discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to Board Member Committee comments, if you've attended any committees representing this board since our last school board meeting, I'd appreciate you sharing with us. Vice Chairman Lockhart?
Yes, last night, we had another insurance committee meeting. Again, fabulous participation, something that I think is worth commenting on in the shift from fully funded to, not fully funded, fully insured to self-insured. The members of the committee really feel the need that they meet on a more consistent basis throughout the year. In the past, I think they took a break for the summer, really wasn't a whole lot to discuss in the former environment, and every single person of the committee really felt that they were engaged and had enough buy-in to the point that they believed it was worth continuing to meet throughout the summer, which was just wonderful because it was their choice to do that, they didn't have to, and they took the initiative. So that was, that was really great to see. They also, and we'll be hearing a lot more about this, made a recommendation to pursue learning more about telemedicine, and how that might positively impact our employees. I don't know if you all are familiar with telemedicine and how that works, but people would have the opportunity to make a phone call and talk to a physician, earache, sore throat, they can call in a prescription to your pharmacy within 30 minutes and never have to get to the doctor, sit in a waiting room, see the doctor, drive back home, just all of it.
Exposed to other germs.
Exposed to other germs. Obviously, it's not going to be for every item, but the idea is to defer cost from either a minute clinic, minor emergency center-type location, and get the, it's a $38 expense as opposed to potentially a $150 expense for a, for a visit to a, I'm not wanting to use a brand name, but you know, to one of those places.
Dock in the box.
Dock in the box, there you go. So anyway, great things, looking forward to seeing more information about that, and it was good. I also attended a Board of County Commission meeting last week, they had a work session related to the zoo and the new emphasis, newly revised emphasis on education and the property that the county purchased for the zoo to build a safari park. Many of you have heard, of course, that the safari park is going to be retooled, it will still be in some ways using part of that property, but that they want to really coordinate with Seminole State, Seminole County Public Schools, University of Florida they're in conversations with, so the Gators on the dais should be happy.
Absolutely.
That this really is an opportunity to build on a strength of our community already, which is education, and to develop a fabulous workforce initiative through the zoo. It was very well-received by the county commission. Commissioner DeLaurie wanted to see the MOUs between the zoo and school district and zoo and Seminole State College, and those are being provided. They're, they're very interested in seeing how they can participate as well, so it could be really good, exciting stuff happening at the zoo.
Great, thank you so much. Member Allman?
Thank you. Children's cabinet this month, Rescue, Child Rescue Network and Safe Kids both presented about empowerment and teaching children healthy and safe behaviors rather than having to react to things, and they're also in conversation with folks in our district to see what information they can share with our teachers, maybe get into the speakers' bureau if that's appropriate. Seminole County Alliance, the different agencies such as Community Based Care, Village Update, Federation of Families, all spouted out numbers of how many incidents that where they've seen children or had reports and followed up. Nothing was handed out, way too many numbers to take notes on if they offer, we did not have a quorum, so hopefully, the next time we do, when they do put minutes together, that information will be there to be able to share. And that's about it for committees, thank you.
Thank you. Member Schaffner?
Yes, the foundation last Thursday had a retreat out at UCF for the day, and we got a lot accomplished, talked about our strategic plan, we had a good turnout for it, I think we had great conversation. So there, we're looking to move ahead with some of the plans, we'll, I'll keep you informed.
Great, thank you. And Mr. Bauer?
No report.
And since we last met, I represented this board and the mayors and managers, and this month, we had no topic, so we just had an open discussion, there really wasn't anything to share, all cities and counties were represented and pretty much rehashed the past and to make sure that we all communicate effectively going forward from here. Also, on our wellness committee, as you know, on each of our job work sites/schools, we have a wellness coordinator and wellness coach, and so they meet annually, and that will be coming up in a few weeks. And during that session, they actually have a keynote speaker this year, we'll have the president of South Seminole Hospital, and she'll be telling her journey, her personal journey of how she has gone through her weight and health issues to bring her to where she is today, and also share some of the best practices that they, as a large employee, employer, just as we are, what incentives and what examples that they use with their entire workforce. They know whether you're a doctor or a nurse, or a teacher or a principal, there's not enough hours in the day to perhaps get to the gym for an hour and a half, but they teach little five-minute things you can do in your chair, or you can do on a lunch break, and things like that, so we're looking forward to having her share all of that with all of our job coaches, and then they amongst themselves share their best practices so it can be replicated and duplicated across the county, no matter what job site you work in. And also, the one-on-one job coaching that our Cigna job coach offers, the RN to any of our employees, has quadrupled recently, so that echoes what Mrs. Lockhart said as far as the insurance committee, that I'm so happy that our employees are taking control of their health and wellness, looking at the wellness side rather than being sick. And SHAC met last month as well, the Seminole Health Advisory Council, and each year, we report to the state many health demographics in the school system, and it looks very favorable this year. We also had a presentation from the Affordable Care Act organizations that are insuring many of our students, and kid care has increased, so there is opportunities for many of our families and students to get insurance that perhaps they couldn't in the past. They have concluded their meetings for the rest of the year and will reconvene back in the fall, but I've, what I've seen over the last year is there's more collaboration and cooperation. There's many people from the school district that attend, whether it be Dr. Walsh, or Mary Lane, and some of our school nurses, and our head school nurse, in addition to community partners, hospitals, and the health department, so the left hand knows what the right hand is doing, so we're not duplicating services, and we can get those people who most need the services, the services they can and attend matter. And I, the FSBA Finance Committee met this past month, you were handed out information at our work session, and any recommendation that they make really is just a discussion because recommendations will come to the full board from the executive committee, so there really wasn't anything but open discussion this month.
I just want to add something that I feel I say about the foundation. As you know, we had a big fundraiser for the arts back in November, and right now, we are in the process of taking checks to every single school in the county to help promote their arts program, and it's being very well-received, obviously, but it's something that we sponsor through the money that we bank from Arts Alive because it all goes back into the arts programs. We sponsor several district-wide projects, but then we also take a check to every single school in the county for their individual arts program, and so we're very, we're being welcomed at these faculty meetings we go and present the checks.
I'm sure you are.
Yeah.
Fantastic. Moving on to public comment, would anyone wish to address the board in the public this evening? This afternoon, I'm not used to saying this afternoon. Okay, great. Dr. Griffin, do we have any unfinished or new business?
Not at this time, and on my report, there are three read-only items, the School Library Media Month Report, synopsis of our new school report card format, and three policy waiver requests.
Thank you. Moving on to Board Member concluding comments, Vice Chairman Lockhart?
We talked so much during our open discussion session, I'm just not sure there's much left to say. I don't have any comments.
Okay, great. Member Allman?
Thank you. So I'll piggyback on the zoo comments, I went to the groundbreaking for the black bear exhibit, and it was very well-attended, but it's interesting, we all go to so many different events, and the majority of the phases are different at each of the events, so it's good to see new community members out there, and that's going to be a great habitat exhibit. I think, I shouldn't speak prematurely, but I think my favorite event that I went to this month was the Transition Fair at Winter Springs High School for our exceptional students. I wish that I had had the whole day there because I really enjoyed talking to each of the different vendors that were there to hear what they provide for our students in the way of support, and then I enjoyed talking to some of the kids who were also there and were really enjoying themselves. So Dr. Walsh, to you and your team, whoever was involved, kudos, that was very well-done. Oviedo High School Jazz Band and Percussion Ensemble, that was awesome. And Oviedo Women's Club, I went to a tea that they had, they put $44,000 into our schools and scholarships in our high schools, and that's probably concentrated in Oviedo, so kudos to them for all the good that they do for our kids. Reflections, one of you all, I'm sure will chime in on that. Something else, just kind of obscure, I saw that Midway Safe Harbor had had a cleanup day, and Publix participated, and I was in the Lake Mary Publix talking to the manager, and they were part of the team, and they do an annual day where they allow their employees with pay to go out into the community and do some type of service that they select on their own. So thank you to Publix, and I know they also have some of their employees that continue to do things on a regular basis along with that particular date. And I serve, and so does DeeDee, on the United Negro College Fund Council, and they're looking for memberships, so if anyone in the community is interested in serving on that board, please see me and we'll give you information. And that is my report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Member Schaffner?
Well, I'm going to pick up on the Publix Volunteer Day they had at Midway Safe Harbor, I went out to see it, and it was like a bunch of ants, they were doing everything out there. They were pressure washing, they were painting, they were, they were digging up bushes, digging out, cleaning, I mean, it was just incredible. Fifty-two of their employees were there, from serving from the different, the different Publixes throughout Seminole County. It was what a wonderful day and so uplifting for those of us that support Midway Safe Harbor, it's just, it was wonderful. And they felt so proud of what they had done, it really made them feel good as well, so that was a great day, it really was. Many of us were here for the retirement, that we had 272 of our employees retiring. Boy, I looked around at some of those and thinking, "My golly, the walls are going to fall down because they, those are the upstanding teachers that we've had for so many years, have done such a great job for us." Couple of us were at the middle school math competition last Saturday, 650 students were there competing in everything from standard up to advanced geometry, middle school geometry taking, whoosh, smart kids.
And the winners were all female teams.
They certainly were, absolutely.
Yeah.
Winter Springs High School had their big gala that they do with their culinary department, and the Hilton Hotel, it was a wonderful event, all put on by students, it was a great event. They do fundraising, part of it went to Give Kids the World, and then the other supports their program, and that's, that's always a great event. The Kids House Gala, although it was not a school-sponsored program, so many of us were at the Kids House Gala because we work so closely with Kids House, they are the one place where children can go who've been abused and receive one-stop service there through the law enforcement, through medical, through counseling, all of the above, and it's a wonderful program, raised a lot of money that night, and they needed to. Internships, kudos to, where are you, back there, Jason? Wonderful job, the internship program over there at the Weston, golly, the companies that were there, and they were so impressed with our students, so that was a great job, and it was a great opportunity for our students as well, but thank you for doing that for us. Couple of things coming up that I'll let the rest of you talk, somebody else can talk about reflections and the Leadership Academy, but tomorrow night here in this room, the Leadership Seminole is going to have the video contest that they do each year among our high schools, and that starts at 5:00, and that's a great event, and all of you are welcome to attend that. And just wanted to piggyback on Teacher Appreciation Week, lots going on out in the schools, thank you all of our PTAs, our businesses who are helping to recognize teachers during this particular week. We like to recognize them all year long, but in particular this week, Teacher Appreciation Week, many of you are stepping forward, and we thank you for what you're doing for our teachers, they're the backbone of our schools.
Absolutely. Well, good, most of mine got checked off, but I still have a few more. Thank you to Oviedo High School who hosted our United States Marine Corps Jazz Band, it was phenomenal evening, I wish more people in the community could have come out because it truly is almost a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, they travel the country, and Oviedo happened to be one of the places they stopped. Want to thank Mayor Jeff Triplet for hosting each year, his youth commission, which are students from our schools, and they hosted a job fair for the community at the Sanford Civic Center a few weeks ago that was well-attended, so kudos to the students and Mayor Triplet. The Boys and Girls Club, in conjunction with Seminole County Public Schools, held a Community Health Day in Sanford, and well-attended, and I love and thank all of our employees that were there staffing our preschool tables, our great start tables, and just sharing the good news with our community. And the Elevating Family Engagement Through Community Collaboration was held at our Early Learning Center that reached out to all of our families to partner with agencies that they perhaps don't know of that provide services to their families. The Orlando Science Center Board Meeting, we thanked our local legislative delegation that came that are actually helping to fund through legislation some of the upgrades that the Science Center will be doing to bring it more to the 21st century and more interacting, the entire building is going to be redone, and so the experiences that our students will have on field trips and will be remarkable, but they're also trying to bring more of those field trips to the schools to make it more accessible to all, so I think that's going to be beneficial for all of our students. Leadership Seminole held the Leadership Circle this past month, and many of the speakers kept saying the reason that they did business in Seminole County was because of the quality schools, so that is really reflective on the excellent teaching that our teachers are doing. And thank you, I think, Ms. Lockhart, you might have been on the call, but I know Dr. Cody was, we had a conference call on charter schools through the Florida School Boards Coalition that we're a member of, and I thought that was very educational, and I had to tip my hat to our staff that we really review our charters the right way, we do the right thing for the community, and it was We do the right thing for the community, and it was enlightening to hear from national charter organizations of how they recommend a district should do it, and I'm like, we already do it that way.
We could have written the speech for him, for heaven's sake.
It was, but those are the kind of things that I think it's important for this board to look nationally because really, we're at that level. I mean, we, we really want to be the national, if not international, leaders. South Seminole Hospital, I serve on their board, and this month, they had the emergency room doctors do a mini seminar for us, and I was so excited. They're Seminole County Public Schools grads, and they wanted to come back here, so we have a lot of rock stars out there in the community that hopefully, when we get all the alumni director will actually know and be able to do some good communication with the community of what a public school education can lead you to from Seminole County. And Croods Academy had their internship fair the day after Dr. Weisong and his team did the phenomenal one at the hotel here, and that was well-attended as well. It's, it's heartwarming to see how many businesses locally respect our students enough to bring them into their places of work, but the only problem we're having is they're not willing to give them back to us, so they keep them not for the semester, but for the year, and then some of them even hire them after graduation, so that's great opportunities for our students. Attended the Health Academy Portfolio Night at Seminole High School. It's always heartwarming to see these students, and we actually had 100% pass rate on the EKG this year, and all the other certifications were in the 90% range, so the teachers and students are doing great things over there. And the city of Sanford invited me to the Soapbox Derby. Have any of you ever attended the Soapbox Derby? I've, I drive by that field all the time, and I've never gone, so I went this time, and there were students from all over the southeast United States. We had two that were Seminole County School students, but they're want, wishing to partner with us in the future because you can compete all the way up to 22 years of age, and my mind was just ticking with our physics classes and robotics of the kind of things that I could see certain teachers of ours in the community, they would love to do some sort of competition like this. So I think the city of Sanford really wants to work with us and give us free videos and work kits and things like that to bring science alive in our classrooms, whether you be in a pre-k classroom or college education. And congratulations to, again, South Seminole Rotary for your RAP program. You truly are changing lives, and you know me with my Kleenex, I have to bring my box every year, but it, it's also important to see that many of the students that were recognized at the RAP program are also getting additional scholarships. I've been going to the scholarships at some of our high schools, and they're being called up a second time and a third time, so it, it's heartwarming to know that our students are loved by the whole community, so thank you for that. And Dolores Lash, a shout-out, the founder of Lake Mary Heathrow Arts Festival, was given the Lifetime Achievement Award from the City of Lake Mary at their State of the City address this week, and that was heartwarming. And I have to say, congratulations to Dr. Blazewitz and Mr. Carnes for winning your SASSA awards this year, very well-deserved. We're proud to have you in leadership in this district and glad that your fellow administrators thought the same. And also got the chance to attend our SCPS Community Leadership that was held this month at Oviedo High School. I love seeing the engagement of our community members from all walk of life. Some have, are parents of students, some aren't, but Mr. Willsky, I have to give a shout-out. This month, we did a deep dive into food service, and they were saying the backend of that cafeteria was cleaner than any five-star restaurant they've ever been in. The food was right up at that same level, and it was exciting that some of the parents were even saying, can we use you to cater parties and will you do this? I mean, that's how good the food samples were that they were sharing, but I think a lot of us have the mindset of what cafeterias are when we went to a cafeteria, or what classrooms are when we went in classrooms, and I think it's beholden on all of us to share the great news that's happening, and that's why I must conclude as well to say thank you, thank you, thank you to all the teachers out there. You're changing lives on a daily basis, and we appreciate all you do.
I've got one, one thing that I've got to tell you about because it was so cool. Dr. Griffin and I were out at Stentstrom, they had their STEM night. I mean, they were shooting off rockets in the yard, they were doing all kinds of things, but the neatest thing was, you went into a room and a family was sitting at a table, I mean, families, a lot of tables, and they had to build a house using certain items, paper, tape, that kind of thing, and it had to be able to withstand hurricane force, rain, and floods. And they actually, after they had built their house, they would bring it over, and they had a test over there, and you know, the hair blower was the one that was going to be the hurricane. That took some houses down, but the flood took a lot of the houses down. It was really interesting to see, but what I thought was unique was the family building the house together, and then, I don't know who was more excited, dad or the kids, but dad was determined, his house was not going down. All the dads were like that. But it was such a great event, it really was. They had put so much time and effort into it, and, but I particularly liked the hurricane and the, the building the house.
Yeah, we saw that at Rainbow Elementary, too.
Yeah, it's cool, really is.
Miss Allman?
I was going to say that we have restaurants and cafes on our campuses, not cafeterias.
That's right, I said that wrong. I was using the vernacular that a public might use, but they are truly restaurants. Anything else? Seeing nothing else to come before this board, this meeting stands adjourned, and you can have dinner tonight with your families after a school board meeting. Yay!